I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, October 21st, 2021, to order. We could still please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Haley, will you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley.
Thank you. President's report, I do not have a report for this evening, so we'll move on to the manager's report. Ms. Francis?
Thank you, President Ballerine. I just wanted to notify residents, if you haven't seen it, posted on our social media, on our village website, and also our e-flashes, information related to Halloween, trick-or-treating hours. If you wish to opt out, similar to last year, you can print out the sheet that says that you're not participating this year with the red X on it, and those that are participating, it has the sheet with the green check mark. So you can find that on our village website, in addition to social media. Also, I have two other items to note, one being the announcement of public hearing for the proposed tax levy for fiscal year 2021 for the Village of Riverside and Riverside Public Library, for a hearing to be held on November 4th, 2021. I'll give a very brief summary that is provided by Director Johns within your agenda packet. The state of Illinois, truth in taxation, taxation law requires that not less than 20 days prior to any taxing body adopting its property tax levies, it must determine how many dollars in aggregate property tax extensions will be necessary. The hearing to be held on November 4th, 2021 is for the 2021 tax levy that will be collected in 2022 and beyond. In an ongoing effort to be transparent and as best practice, staff is recommending a tax levy hearing to take place on November 4th, with final adoption of the tax levy ordinance to take place on December 2nd, 2021. The village will conduct a public hearing on the proposed tax levy ordinance regardless of such hearing being required. Once adopted, the tax levy will be filed with Cook County Clerk's office while in advance of the December 28th, 2021 deadline. And included in your packet is a draft of the public notice that will be sent to the landmark for publication. The next item under manager's report is the announcement of the public hearing for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 for the Village of Riverside and Riverside Public Library, hearing to be held at November 4th, 2021. So similar to, as was outlined, with regard to public hearings taking place on November 4th, once again, the final adoption for the budget will take place on December 2nd, 2021, and the budget ordinance will be filed with the Cook County Clerk shortly thereafter, once again, in advance of the deadline. Also, included in the packet is the notice of the public hearing and a draft agenda for the public hearing. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Do we have any resident comments for non-agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Several items on the consent agenda, approve the voucher list of bills, October 21st, 2021, approve the Village Board of Trustees regular meeting minutes, October 7th, 2021, review and file Landscape Advisory Commission meeting minutes, September 14th, 2021, review and file Fire, Police, and Public Work Department's September 2021 reports, and Finance Department's August 2021 reports, motion to approve a special event application for the Riverside Public Library Halloween Storytime and Parade in Guthrie Park on October 29th, 2021, a motion to approve a special events application for the Fall Back into Fun Parents Night Out in the St. Mary's Parish Center parking lot on Saturday, November 6th, 2021, resolution authorized the village manager to waive competitive bidding and enter an agreement with Pave Connect in the amount of $34,830 for crack ceiling to be conducted on various rivers, various village roadways, a resolution authorizing sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside, and a resolution authorizing expenditure of $105,000 for 2021 maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. Do any of these items need to be removed? Okay, hearing none, I would ask for a motion.
Motion is made.
Motion, Trustee Gallegos, second. Second, Trustee Marsh Ozga. Ms. Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Board and Commission reports, do we have any reports? Okay, we have no pending business, new business, A, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $263,400 in general obligation limited tax bond series 2021 for the purpose of providing the revenue source for payment of certain outstanding bonds of the village, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorize the sale of said bonds to Hinsdale Bank and Trust. Director Johns?
Good evening. I'm happy to present that for the competitive sale where the village received six bids for the sale of this debt issuance. This debt issuance had an interest rate of 0.79% compared to a 0.95% that we received for our 2020 C bonds at this time last year. I also have Mark Gerantina from Spear, if there's any additional questions.
Thank you. Mr. Gerantina? Trustees, any questions for Mr. Gerantina? Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Can I, please, can I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Uh, from, uh, motion from Trustee Gallegos, second? Second, from Trustee Marsh Ozga. Ms. Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. B, an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to accessory structures in residential zoning districts. We've sent, we discussed that Trustee Pollock asked that this, um, particular item be,
Tabled.
Tabled, thank you. And he wants to work with staff to try to get a more comprehensive ordinance put together that is, you know, takes, takes a little bit of the ambiguity out of the ordinance as written. But with that being said, he also wants to hear from the trustees, that after, you know, after reading this, is there anything that you feel that you'd like to, you'd like to have him add or take a look at? So I'll open it up to, anything? Go ahead.
I'd be glad to provide a little bit of, expand on that a little bit. In reviewing the, the draft that Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed, and then subsequently their recommendation, there were two areas that I had concerns with. One was just, uh, the organization and the clarity of the, of the document, of the language in the, in the ordinance. I think there's some, um, some, some non-substantive items that need to be amended for, to, to make it clear. For example, it uses the term "structures" to refer to buildings, and there's some conflict in that, and that distinction should be made. It's not a substantive change, it's just making the ordinance, uh, more, more clear. I think there's some definitions that are missing that should be added, and, and similar items like that that I'd like to work with staff to get cleaned up, and, and before we approve an ordinance. There's also some substantive changes that I would like to continue to look at, for the village to look at. And I know the Planning and Zoning Commission has, has done their, their work, and they've done a good job in discussing and trying, coming up with recommendations. But I still think that there's some, I'd still like some more discussion on some of those items, and, uh, some additional discussion, and any feedback the board or trustees want to provide would be helpful. You know, for example, currently, there's no limit on the number of accessory buildings that you can have on your property. There's only the impervious lot coverage and, and the, uh, the maximum square foot of buildings on, on the property. As a result, someone, and this, to my knowledge, this hasn't happened, but it could, and we should, should be proactive in making sure it doesn't happen, in my opinion, someone could build four sheds on their property, as long as the square footage was less than what's permitted. Someone could build six sheds. Now, that sounds ridiculous, and it probably is, but, you know, there's no reason to leave that open-ended like that. So that's just one example. Now, I know the Planning and Zoning did look at height limits before. I still think that there's an opportunity there, and I'd like some further, further consideration of that, as well as plumbing and heating and ventilation, facilities, mechanicals that could go to an accessory building. Planning and zoning has made their recommendation on that, but again, I would like to see some further discussion on that. I have some ideas that haven't been pursued yet, and I, maybe others do too, and if you, if, you know, if that's, if you have, have those ideas, please share them. And then finally, some more clarity on the use of accessory buildings, how they're used and for what purpose. I, I still think that there could be some more, uh, some more work to be done there. So that's generally what my concerns were and why I've asked, or recommended that this be tabled, so that I can work with staff, bring it back to the, to the board, and then you can decide based on that if you want to just approve the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation that they've already made, or if you want to send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further consideration based on, on that input. So, thank you for indulging me and let me get, get all that out, and, uh, I look forward to hearing what the trustees have to say.
Trustees, Trustee Clarity?
I appreciate your generous offer to lend your tremendous expertise here, and so I, I'm very supportive of opening it up both for your non-substantive changes, as you've described, but also interested in engaging in some of the substantive topics as well. I would like to have a further discussion on the garage height issue. I do believe that's something that deserves a little bit of consideration with this board in order to recognize the changing circumstances we find ourselves in the world and the changing ways in which people are using their homes. I don't particularly have a strong concern about the max number of accessory structures, but I'm happy to have a discussion with the trustees and learn a little bit more about your concerns there. I also am a little bit interested to have, you know, hear from this board and have a discussion on the 800-foot max and the limitation that applies regardless of lot size.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just had a couple of things, and is, one is, um, in the, in the draft resolution, they, they pulled out pool houses as being able to have, you know, full showers and things like that, and they refer back to the pool ordinance. Um, that's a very low bar, that pool ordinance, it's a 100 square feet and a two-foot deep, so that someone can literally go to Costco and buy a $200 pool and then turn their garage into a pool house. So I think we need to put our, put our arms around that. I, I also would like to, to look at, um, possibly maximizing, not maximizing, but raising the height of the garage for, for possible use of both a, you know, studio, office, or car lift. I think that's very beneficial. I'd rather people go up than people go wide. I was listening to a, a board, a zoning board of appeals meeting, um, from another community that allows, allows coach houses, um, and the gentleman was asking for a variance for, to, to add a third floor to his home. And one of the commissioners says, "Well, why don't you just add a second floor to your garage since we allow that?" And I was surprised at the answer. It is more expensive to add a second floor to a garage than it is to a third floor of the home, because the plumbing is already there, the sewers are already there, the heating's already there, the electrical's already there. I don't know about your garages, and the foundation is a foundation that's built to hold two stories or, or more, where a garage is a slab. My garage has, you know, two outlets. I could never, you know, I'd have to update the electricity. I have no heat out there. It would be very expensive. So the, 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 some of the worry about a garage becoming a dwelling, it would take quite a bit of investment for that to happen. So I would like to at least, to, to, to you to look at that. So, thank you. Anything else we'd like to talk about on that? Trustee Hannan?
Again, echoing, uh, Trustee Clarity's comments, um, you know, I think it, I read it through, I think it, it needed some, some clarity, and I'm glad Trustee Pollock took that on. I, I too am interested in, in the discussion on whether we need a restriction of the number of ancillary structures. Um, you know, I'd, I'd rather have someone build a second shed than, you know, have stuff strewn throughout the yard or, or from there. So I, you know, there's, I know there's divergent views. I think it'd be a wonderful topic to talk through, but in the context of a specific proposal that I think we're going to get back from Trustee Pollock.
And the other, the, the other part of this is, Trustee Pollock has, has offered to, to mentor staff on this, and I think this is a great opportunity for our new planner to spend some quality time with one of the best planners in the state of Illinois, and, and learn from an old master. So, I appreciate that.
Emphasis on old.
Trustee Gallegos?
I, I too would also be in favor of height limits being raised so that on the second floor, it could be full use for those who want to work on the second floor of their garages. I know there's some structural issues that you have a question on for adding on, but, you know, that's for a structural engineer really to take care of, and not really for a worker to put limits on, so I'd like to have both floors of the garage in full use.
Anything else? Trustee Evans? No? Okay. We move on. A resolution, oh, sorry.
Yeah, excuse me. So, just procedurally, so we had a public hearing, and now the recommendation has come up here, and so I understand you're tabling it, but if, if there's any thought that we may want to eventually, you know, pass this with just a few tweaks, or remand it back to the PCC, uh, using the same notice, then we would want kind of a date certain that it's getting tabled to for further discussion here, so anyone following along from that original public notice can follow it. It sounds like ultimately, we may be sending it back with a, a number of additional changes and publish a new hearing notice, but if we want to keep that option open, we should, uh, maybe try to pick a date to which we can bring this back to the board for further discussion, whether it's, and any date's fine. If it's two months, it's two months, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. As, my suggestion would be to table it for a month. If we're not ready in a month, we table it again.
Sure.
But at least that way, it keeps that legal notice alive.
Sure.
And do we need a motion?
Yeah, if we could do just a motion in a second, uh, to the 21st, would that be? Is that correct?
November?
November 20th.
We'd rather have a 21st meeting in December.
18th.
18th?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah. So I'll make that motion to table this to November 18th.
I'll second.
Second by, uh, Trustee Clarity. Ms. Haley, if you please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes, and again, Doug, I appreciate you doing this and mentoring our new planner. That's a, that's a wonderful byproduct of this, thank you. See a resolution determining the estimated Village of Riverside real estate property tax levy for year 2021. Director Johns?
Good evening. As required by the statute of taxation law, the village is required to publicly announce the estimate of the 2021 property tax levy, and that estimate is the 2021 tax levy estimate for the village net of abatements totaling $418,700, total $6,49,115. Of this total tax levy amount, $5,316,841 is for the capped funds, and $125,000 is for the non-capped special purpose funds, and $60869 is for the non-capped debt service funds. Although the estimated levy for the capped funds reflects a 4.95% increase over the prior year's final levy, this increase will be reduced by Cook County Tax Extension Office to an approximate increase of 1.4%. Also, is the Riverside Public Library 2021 tax levy estimate in the amount of $1,314,392. Of this total tax levy amount, $1,189,232 represents the general purpose levy, and $118,600 represents the debt service levy. The total library levy increased 1.31%, greater than the previous year's levy. The library board approved their preliminary tax levy at their October 12th, 2021 meeting.
Are there any questions for Ms. Johns? Hearing none, if I can have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Trustee Gallegos, Gallegos, the second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Marsh Ozga. Ms. Haley, if you please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Discussion of the recommended fiscal year 2022 budget. Ms. Johns, please.
Good evening. Tonight, I have provided for you a proposed budget for the fiscal year 2022. Staff started this budget process with the board in July with discussion about long-term capital planning and resource allocation. The board continued this process with presentation of the 10-year capital improvement plan and the five-year financial forecast in September and October of this year. This plan has continued to be refined through input from the board, village manager, and department heads. Staff is happy to present a balanced general fund budget for the board's review tonight with a slight surplus of $74,000 in unassigned fund balance. Staff has seen, oh, sorry, this budget is available at the front desk for a public inspection. Staff has seen revenues rebound from last year's COVID decreases. 2021, we had a very conservative revenue projection budget, but strong per capita revenues and sales tax figures have helped bolster our budget for 2022. The village is now receiving sales tax from online realtors that ship to Riverside addresses. This is a huge change in how sales tax has been received in previous years, and that amount of online sales tax represented over 25% of June's sales tax revenues, and is expected to continue to rise in this holiday season. Included in your packet tonight is also a listing of all capital projects that have changed since the capital improvement plan presentation. However, just as a reminder, all projects over 20,000 will come back to the board for final approval. Department heads are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have about the budget document in front of you.
Thank you, Ms. Johns. Do we have any questions from anyone? I think we have to discuss the water, the next steps on the water?
Correct.
Okay, because we have a couple of options there?
Sure.
Um, is that a good place to start? Trustee Hannan, please?
I, I just had a couple of questions about some increases, just so I understand where these are coming from, if that's appropriate at this time?
Sure.
Great. Um, you, just looking at the, the summary, that's page 203 of the materials, seems like every three years, our Board of Police and Fire Commissioners goes, you know, from a little under $2,000, goes up to 17, and I see that sort of trend in the last couple of years. I just don't recall what that was from.
Sure. That is due to the timing of the lists for the patrol officers and sergeants. Those lists expire in 2022, so that is for testing, um, of those new officers to create that hiring list.
Okay, because that was 2019 as well.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's perfect. And then just trying to get my arms around, in the Parks and Recreation, there seems to be, you know, amounts going up and down. Is, are these changes related to the prior discussion we had on, um, moving special events, or, if you can sort of run me through, you know, there, there looks like some, some fluctuations going either way. I just don't have my arms around what those are.
So in 20, um, sorry, double-checking my history.
Go ahead.
Um, the special events were moved from the recreation special events up to a village manager's special events, so that's the large shift in that one.
Yep.
Um, also, in 2020, we separated out recreation programming from before and after school. So in your 2020 numbers, we really, for the majority of the year, just had one area for programming. That was then separated out into, um, recreation programming and before and after school. So that's the reason for some of that fluctuation in recreational programming expenses going down and before and after school going up.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Johns, do you want to walk us through what we need to discuss?
Absolutely. The next steps will be the public hearings at the November 4th meeting and presented for final adoption at the December 2nd meeting. Also, at the November 4th meeting, staff will, will present potential rate changes for board consideration, including small increases to make sure staff costs are being covered, and, um, based off the financial forecast discussion, rolling the infrastructure fee into water and sewer rates. I presented a table for you in your packet today showing if there was a $6 increase in rate for the water sewer fee, what this would do to the current bill, and then also increase it by $3, and what this could do to potential bills. I tried to give examples of different businesses in town. So if there was a $6 increase, the minimum bill would not change. The average bill would increase from $170 by monthly to 206, um, and so on. The aggregate of the total current bill that we receive in water sewer infrastructure fee is approximately $550,000. If the rate was increased by $6, that would increase to an annual collection of a little over 1.6 million. If it was increased by $3, um, the, the rate, the average bill would increase from 170 to 173. The minimum bill would actually decrease from $94 to $79, and the total infrastructure fee would increase from the current $550,000 to just over $800,000.
Trustee Pollock?
I have a couple of questions for clarification. First of all, why is it just a, a, an assumption that staff made that the minimum bill would not go up?
Is, is that a typo?
Yeah.
I mean, you said that, that with the $6 increase or the $3 increase per unit, the minimum bill wouldn't go up. Well, why not?
With a $6 increase for five units, um, with regard, without any other rate changes, the bill would remain stable.
So perhaps it's worded, not worded the best, it was
It was taking the infrastructure fee, which is $30 for the bimonthly billing, and then five units is our minimum bill. And so taking that and saying we're allocating $6 per unit instead of it now just being a separate standalone fee. And so that's what Director Johns was trying to show. If, if we were to do that, there would be no net change for that particular resident, and then kind of showing them the differences based on the consumption.
Changing the...
The formula.
Per unit would not change the minimum, but the board could elect to just increase the minimum.
Yes.
Independent of the rate.
That is correct.
Okay. I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm just, just wanted to be clear about that.
Yep.
The other thing is, I did the math. Divided the current, you know, the column with the current bill by the units, and it seems the rate per unit seems to change with each one. Why, why is that, or did I do the math wrong?
It's because it's the current rate plus the $30 infrastructure fee.
Oh, so you're, the current bill, it's the rate, it's, it's... So for the average bill, it's 11 times the rate plus...
Plus 30.
30.
Correct.
But the rate, the per unit rate for all of these categories is the same.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. That's why it decreases the higher the assumption goes. Okay.
The other thing we can look at is, as, you know, if we don't want to... We, we could look at as you use more water, you have a decrease. So up to so many units, you pay $3, you know, increase by 3. After so many units, you increase by 2. We have that as an option. You know, I like the, I like the idea of promoting conservation of water. I, I, I don't want to negatively affect our, you know, our businesses. So I, you know, I'd be interested in any of your input on that, trustee Pollak.
Thank you for that, because that was my third question I forgot to ask. What would it take, what would it take for staff to estimate the annual revenue of a tiered rate structure? Is it even possible, or is there something I'm missing as to why? Because you made the comment that you're unable to do that.
It would be reviewing every single water bill, and that's just a little bit more cumbersome than this exercise that was put in front of you. That is something that staff could endeavor on if that was the model that the board wanted to look at.
Could be done, would just take a lot of work and time. I get it. Sure, sure. Thank you.
Over here, trustees? I like the idea of putting, you know, putting more money in the infrastructure revenue. It allows us to, to do our projects faster, because we know that's what, you know, our goal is, so. So do we want to task Director Johns with any further work? Do you want to do six, or you want to do three? Looking.
I'll go first.
Go ahead. Please.
Because I seem to be talking a lot. I'd be more comfortable, at least initially, doing the lesser amount, $3. We could consider raising it again in another year or two. But a sudden impact of all at once of $6 a unit increase, I think is a bit much all at once. But if we need, I mean, as I've said before, this is an enterprise fund. If we need the money, we need the money, because it all stays, every dime we collect goes toward providing water to the residents. And so whatever the expense is, we've got to collect that amount from the residents, or from the users, I should say. So, you know, initially I'd go with the smaller increase. I would ask that staff think about for next year, you'll have a full year. I know how busy staff is, and I don't want to put difficult burdens or undue burdens on them. But maybe next year, if there, if we can have a tiered rate structure analysis to consider next year, because I still think that's the way to go in the long run.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Hannan?
I, I, I like the idea that, at least as we explain, the increase by the $3 ends up in a decrease of the minimum bill. And so the burden of providing the rest of the funds are not people paying the minimum bill using very little water. That appeals to me. You know, I'm looking at this, you know, large, single-family residence, you know, large multifamily, and, you know, those are some hefty increases if we increase it by $6. But I think, you know, your words, President Ballerine, that, you know, this is the fund, the infrastructure improvements, and we want to do those sooner rather than later. I think at a, at a prior meeting, you know, I sort of urged staff to find a way to, how, you know, how do we fix some of these sewer problems on a more accelerated rate? You know, we discussed that. It was cost prohibitive. You know, I'd like to see this increase in the context of, you know, if we do go to six, but if that only gets us three months closer than if we did three, that, that's a decision point that I don't have right now. So, you know, I understand it's double, but I just want to understand sort of the monumental task we're taking on with some of these, you know, sewer and water projects, you know, are we really moving the dial by going up to six?
My gut reaction is that it's not, we won't have the proper road funds to be redoing the streets at that time. The water and sewer fund, when we're redoing a sewer or a water main, is paying for that portion of the street remodel. So unless we're just doing those pathways above the streets, we also need to have enough funding from our MFT revenues and our local non-home rule sales tax to cover the rest of the street expenses. So I feel that that will quickly become the bottleneck in getting some of those projects done quicker. But I'm happy to do that analysis and see exactly where that roughs out.
That'd be, that'd be helpful to know. I mean, if, if, if raising it by 3, you know, matches up with the road funds, then there's no point in raising it to six.
Okay.
I agree. I'd be interested in seeing that. I think this is a struggle here. Our residents are very consistently asking us to remedy some of these issues and, and begging us to remedy them faster. And so I struggle with these, these are some big leaps here, even at the $3 mark, but particularly at the $6 mark. And so I'm happy to consider it. But if, but if it doesn't speed up the process because of other constraints, that, you know, it's difficult to find the value here in doing this now in a time in which, you know, it's a strange economy, property taxes are up, we're just conscious of costs.
Thank you. I particularly like the idea of the three. I mean, I, you know, the goal is to keep the majority people, you know, without, you know, really paying a, a, an increased amount. Yeah, I always felt that the $30 infrastructure fee was somewhat unfair to the average resident, considering the amount of water that the average resident uses and the amount of water that a multifamily uses or aquatic center or a large multifamily. So I, I always felt that that was a little out of balance. I think this is much more in balance. So that's, that's my feeling, so. So do we have a consensus that we will move on with three? And then you're going to make, you're, you're going to get us some information about how the road fund ties into this?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. We move on.
I'm sorry?
Where would you like to go to next?
Our next question for next steps is, would the board be comfortable with village ordering, presenting purchase orders for new vehicles in 2021 so that we can order them? The lead time for vehicles, we are seeing anywhere from six to 18 months, depending on the, the type of the vehicle. My estimate is that most of them would not be received in 2021, although there is a possibility that one might be received. So if the board is receptive, we could bring these requests for purchases to the board in the remainder of 2021 to try to get those vehicles as soon as we can.
And tell us what vehicles we're talking about. I know we have two police cars, correct?
It is the, the...
We have one supervisor, police vehicle, two squads, a public works...
Two public work vehicles.
Two public works vehicles.
Potentially an ambulance and a fire truck.
Which would be paid through the ARPA funds, which we've already received one check. And I do want to note the surplus that is noted on that summary sheet. We back out the ARPA funds. So the surplus that you're seeing for projected for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year is actually backing out those funds.
And just to be clear, the fiscal that we're, the projected surplus that we are expecting in 2021 is $745,000 and change.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Trustees?
We're going to have a request for, an ROP done now, and we'll review each one when they come in. I'm fine with that. Yeah.
Trustee Hannan, you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all the questions I have tonight, unless there's any other requested changes that the board would like to make for the presented budget.
I would just ask, Leo, could you tell us about the body cameras?
Sure. So we moved in at Exxon. Obviously, the body cameras are a tool. Obviously, they're not mandated until 2025. But the sooner we have them, they're a tool that everybody is moving towards, and I think it brings officer safety. So we're pushing that not only, you know, keeping us, currently, we just have video cameras inside the car. So once we leave the cars, we're off camera if you're not within that cone of the camera. So just documenting everything for the officer's safety, and obviously, the law is pushing that towards us moving that way in 2025. So we're looking to get into that sooner. So body cameras and in-car cameras is what we're pushing.
And the body cameras, are the in-car cameras now going to have the automatic license plate reader? Is that part of this whole process, too?
Yes, through Exxon, the LPRs are included with the purchase of the new, newer technology of the in-car cameras.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's, that's an amazing product. I mean, last night was a result of, you know, the, of license plate reader in Chicago that happened to end up in line, so.
Yes.
That was a homicide, so that's...
Yeah, LPR picked it up on the expressway with the new, the new cameras that you're seeing, because of all the expressway shootings, advising that it was, that vehicle was involved in a double homicide in a different community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for any of the department heads? Looks like you've done a good job, Karen. Thank you. We move on to trustee reports and communications. Anyone have anything they'd like to say? Trustee Marsh Ozga?
I just have a brief one. The very final Olmstead 200 seed hunt of the year is happening this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. It is being done in conjunction with the Landscape Work Day, where there will be a tree planting, too, in honor of one of the Olmstead Society's longtime volunteers. The guest experts for our seed hunt, our guest nature guides, are going to be Roy Diblick, who is a very famous landscape designer, who has written the Know Your Perennials Maintenance Book, and also did Lurie Gardens in Chicago. He supplied all the plants for that, did the Shed Aquarium Gardens, and our very own Riverside Public Library Garden. So he's going to be one of the two guests. The other will be Anna Maria Leon, who is an award-winning permaculture expert. And she owns, or she co-owns two farms in Lawndale, actually. So she's very civically oriented, so we have very, you know, a very fun opportunity to meet and, you know, rub elbows with these people while we also collect seeds and plant a tree. So it's going to be a lot of fun. RSVP@olmsteadsociety.org. Hope to see you there Saturday at 9:00.
Thank you, trustee Marsh Ozga. Anyone else? Trustee Evans?
The Riverside Junior Women's Charity is coordinating a food drive to benefit the Riverside Township Food Pantry. They have reported that food is, the accessibility to food for the people in need is becoming a little harder. There's not as many donations. Items that are especially needed include shelf-stable milk or non-dairy products, things that people can use with cereal, canned proteins, fruits and vegetables, pasta and pasta sauce, and canned soup. So please consider picking up a few things the next time you shop and dropping them off in the boxes outside the township office.
Thank you. Anything else? I only have one thing. We were notified this week that LAC Chair Kathy Maloney has resigned. I'd like to thank her for her years of service. She was a very dedicated commissioner. The commission is, is meeting, and they will be choosing amongst themselves a new chair, which I will bring to you all probably hopefully at the next meeting. We plan on having a proclamation for Ms. Maloney, as well as for a couple of our other trust, or commissioners that have, have served. We've ordered some Riverside swag for them. So we have Commissioner Busio and also Commissioner Gorst, who comes to mind, that they've all served for many years. So that will be on an upcoming agenda. So again, Kathy, thank you very much for your service to our community. There's nothing more. We have no need for an executive session tonight, so I am looking for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion made.
A motion by trustee Gallegos, second?
Second.
By trustee Marsh Ozga. Ms. Haley, if you would, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, department heads, for being here and answering questions. We appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening.